All right, it's seven o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge.
May I just say to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion by council member Pershman.
A second.
And a second by council member Ma. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, we do not have anybody here this evening joining us for community comment. So we'll move past that one. Presentations and reports, five point one, the Third Street Bridge Construction. Mr. Schmidt.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to give the council an update tonight on where the bridge project sits today. I'm sure it's felt like a marathon to many of you this summer with that one. It has for me as well. But I just wanted to kind of give a full background of everything that's happened this summer and kind of where we're at today. I think we have a good path forward, so that's a good thing I want to share tonight. But basically, as, as you all are aware, the base bid in the contract included twelve inch steel pilings to be installed as the foundation material for the bridge. The contractor was required through the contract documents to provide for precondition surveys of all the buildings and then subsequently develop a vibration monitoring plan, which is provided by a licensed professional engineer. So the contractor retained those engineering services with their subconsultant to do that. The vibration limits were set based on the condition of the, of the buildings as observed in that precondition survey process. So that, that was set at a, at a low level, but it was because of what was observed through those surveys. So the contractor then, in the month of July, they moved in to do the removals for the project. So they removed all the surfacing improvements and started digging down to excavate for the, for the bridge work itself. Through that process, it was discovered that just by doing those kind of basic construction activities that the alarms, the alarms for the vibration devices were already starting to go off. So that was kind of a, a red flag for the contractor in that the piling was, would be a more rigorous activity versus even some of the like excavating removal work that they were doing. So basically what they said at that time is, based on the limits that have been set, we aren't able to install that piling without, without exceeding those thresholds. So they offered that, A, the city could either provide a waiver of liability and they could proceed per original design, or B, we could look into an, an alternative foundation design for the, for the structure. They had offered at that time that helical pilings would be a good solution to review because it doesn't cause the same vibrations that a conventional pile driven into the ground would do. And they even offered to us that cost should be similar to what the regular piling cost was for the project, assuming there weren't any major design things that had to change as far as like the number of piles or the footage of how deep they need to go. So we basically were, were on pause since the end of July when, when they kind of notified us that we either have to give us a waiver or come up with some sort of a different approach to install this bridge. So during the month of August, we engaged with Braun Intertech, who is our geotechnical engineer of record for the project. We started going down the path of reviewing the helical pilings and putting together a design for the piles. That happened, it was towards the end of August. We got a design that Braun was comfortable with. We then sent that to the contractor for pricing. Based on the design, the number of piles, the depth of those piles, it was anticipated that it would get, increase the contract price by about $240,000 to the contract. Working with MINDOT, you know, this is a, a contract change potential here. Through the bridge replacement program, they didn't feel that they had adequate funding to be able to cover a gap like that. So we're kind of in a really tough position now of we either have this $240,000 cost premium or we still go and go down the path of offering some sort of a waiver to the contractor to proceed per plan. So in consultation with the city attorney, city manager, we decided that it's probably not the, the best idea to, to issue a waiver. We should try to at least complete the test pilings for the helical pile system and see if those results would, would yield the bearing capacity that we need for the piles. So last week, we completed two test piles and neither test pile was successful for the helical piles. The, the, the pilings were, they encountered a layer of cobbles or boulders that were about fifteen to twenty feet under the proposed footing grade. And what was observed, the contractor pulled the piles out to observe if there was damages. And basically the, think of a helical piling as a big screw that gets screwed into the ground. The flights on the piling, they call it basically the, the part that actually like holds the load, those got actually folded back and flattened out because they couldn't get through the, the layer of the cobbles and boulders. So basically what that meant is with, with any like, with the conventional helical pile drilled method, it does not seem feasible to go with helical pilings. There are other options to try to penetrate that layer by means of pre drilling a hole with other equipment, but that would come at a very large cost, something that would be much more in excess of that $240,000 that we were already potentially faced with having to discuss. So we, we pushed pause on that and I directed the contractor to dig a series of test pits in the, in the excavation last week. We had Braun come out and what we wanted to do is get a better idea of that soil profile to see if there is a way that a, a spread footing design would work versus doing helicals or another sort of a piling system to take the load. So basically a spread footing, think of it as like a house foundation or anything. You have, you know, a large, a concrete structure to span the load out and support it over a, a bigger distance. And what we found is the soils were actually a little bit better than what the, the previous soil boring, borings were that were taken during design. During the design phase, the borings were taken kind of off on each side of where the bridge is, but now we were able to actually get several holes like right in the middle of like where the road was. And based on the soils that we encountered there, they were able to take that back and do a settlement analysis. So Braun had completed the analysis last Friday on a preliminary basis and they, they said things are looking good. We're seeing settlements that are one to two inches potentially. Typically, for a, a pile driven structure, we set a threshold of one inch for maximum settlement. So we were thinking, well, this might actually work as of Friday. So we decided to, to dig into it a little bit deeper. Braun completed their settlement analysis today and informed me that they were getting settlements of one inch. So that's, that's good. I was thinking that if we were in the two inch range, it, it's not as good obviously because you could maybe experience some cracking in the head wall. Some of those aesthetic items, it wouldn't be a thing where the bridge would fail on you, but you might see some, some cracking that could be a long-term aesthetic issue. So in the meantime, I had the contractor, we developed quantities for doing a subcut of four feet below the footing grade and then backfilling that with a series of larger riprap material and then capping that with a smaller aggregate material. So basically doing an improved engineered foundation below the soils. What we're, what we're seeing is the soils were like a silty sand that were very saturated. So in the, in itself, they don't have a lot of bearing capacity because they're so loose. But by improving that with putting in that riprap to kind of intermingle with that material, it's able to kind of essentially bridge it and then filling on top of that with more of just like an aggregate layer that you can, it's more of like a leveling pad. And then the concrete spread footings go on top of that. So I had the contractor price up, the cost to do the four foot subcut and the aggregate backfill. And surprisingly, it's actually working out where the cost to do the spread footing design in construction is equal to the cost of what the original piling was. So that is super good news. So I'm not seeing a net increase to the contract price as a result of this change. And I think at this time, this is our best path forward and I'd recommend that we, we direct the contractor to, to move forward with this revised design and, and start building the permanent construction. So that's kind of the full, you know, summary of everything that transpired this summer. Obviously, it's September already, so that's worrisome, obviously. So the, the contract provided for a completion date to get the road paved by November first. I think that's not going to happen. We're probably looking at paving, you know, middle of November at this time. So I want to preface this with, in all cases, there's a chance that the road wouldn't get paved this year. I just want to be transparent with, with you all. It could be where we get it to gravel surface again and if it's too late and the bituminous plants are shut down, we're going to have to leave it as gravel over the winter. But I think if we, if we tell the contractor to go, they're going to start moving and we'll see how everything progresses, but just want to make you aware that there's a chance that it doesn't get paved. So.
Aaron, if you tell the contractor tonight, do they get moving tomorrow? Like how quickly can they?
Yeah, so I, this is obviously a huge discussion and a big update. So I've, I've kind of put the contractor on notice that after tonight, I'll be able to give them firm, firm direction. They have, they've left the, they have a pump on. They left it over the weekend, so it started to pull all the water down and pulled the water out of the grade so they can start excavating that material out. So we did that proactively last Wednesday. They started pumping again so they can try to de-water that as much as they can. And yeah, so I think they'll be gearing up really quickly here and, and starting to get back on site. So.
Okay. I think, you know, I would love to see this paved before the snow flies. I remember we paved Sixth Street and there were snow flurries, but I would rather see this done right. So I think we're headed in that right direction. Appreciate the update. Questions?
My question is, so if we're looking at possibly going to like November, you know, Thanksgiving time before we can pave this and then we go into our freeze cycle anyways, does it make? I, again, along the lines of I'd rather it be done right than rushed. So if would it make more sense then to not go through a freeze thaw cycle with the bituminous if we can't, I mean, if we're rushing to try and get it in? And then just wait until spring because we're going to end up freezing that, that gravel S five or whatever you put down is going to freeze hard as well. And then we have, then we're not sneaking it in, we're getting one more, I guess, I don't want to say one more year of, of use out of it before we have to do some of the maintenance that we're looking at rather than trying to sneak it in quick before and rush.
Yeah.
What is that?
That's, that's a very good technique that's used a lot of times when there's like utility construction. Number one, you intentionally leave off the wear course pavement pretty much in all circumstances unless you have to do it for some reason. So I wasn't planning on putting on wear course regardless, but to your point, if you get it all backfilled and you just gravel it, it's, it's not going to hurt. It's only going to make it better if you leave it settle out, I'll call it, over a freeze thaw cycle over the course of a winter. So what I would advise is if we have a really good fall and things are coming together nicely, I think we just stick to the plan. But I can update you as this progresses and if, if it's getting late and it's just, we're pushing a bad position where it doesn't make sense, then yeah, let's have that conversation again and let's just let it sit and be gravel over the winter if, if the council's okay with that. So.
Yeah, I, I guess I, yeah, I guess I had two questions. So with expanding out the load bearing, do we still have enough easements and area for construction? Do we need to, you know, the, the load bearing concrete, does that need to kind of extend beyond what we had originally planned for the construction area? Or is it, are we able to keep those, you know, load bearing footings in the same outline plan?
Yeah, so the, the permanent construction improvements will all be within the, the easements that we've acquired. The temporary easements that we acquired, that's something that we looked at very closely last week on site with the contractor. And that was one of the concerns they had right away is just doing the subcut to make sure they had enough width because basically the deeper you go, the wider the excavation gets. So we talked about some options of like putting a trench box in to like get into like the far corners of the excavation. So we had that conversation and they know that they still need to stay within the construction limits based on the easements that we've acquired. So I, we'll have a plan for that, but that's a really good question.
And then on the, with the pilings and footings, right, we, we obviously didn't know the exact geology underneath until we dug under there, right? So was there anything else we could have done? I mean, we had done some test borings, but again, you just randomly sample, right, a spot. So we're just, it's just a construction thing that happens, right? You get out there, you actually do the work and find it, oh, the, the spot we picked was either lucky, I mean, you get kind of, you know, just maybe that kind of.
It's kind of a balancing act because obviously soil burns aren't free either. So you, you kind of decide on the front end of the project, how many holes you want to poke in the ground when you're designing a project. And that's what ultimately, so we, one of the borings that we had showed very poor clay soils, but it was, it was off to the side of the, the proposed bridge head wall. And then when we actually kind of dug into the test pits, we didn't see that poor layer. So that was originally, obviously, the, the spread footings are kind of the base design for, for a project if you can because it, it's generally less expensive to do if you have decent soils. So we would have picked spreads originally, but Braun didn't recommend spreads because of the, of the geotech evaluations that were completed. So I mean, at the end of the day, it, I think it's still great that we're, we're hanging in there with the contract price, but it's just taking a lot longer to get there. So.
Sure. I guess that was what there was. This construction, you have no concerns about the, you know, long-term bridge, the spread footing, like you said, is a common use and there's no, no long-term concerns versus pilings or?
Correct. Yeah, I, we actually just had a, a meeting with the MINDOT Bridge Office this morning to talk about this project and obviously they're a, they're a funding partner in this, so I need to keep them posted every step of the way. So they, they had no issues with what we were going to propose to do. You know, he threw out a value of, you know, ninety percent of the, the culverts in, in the state that get done are, are on spreads. So Fourth Street was on spreads when it was done and Main Street was on piling. So we're, we're just kind of in this weird transition zone in the soil strata.
Good. And then just again to pop with, you know, if, you know, as the construction progresses and if, you know, don't feel like, for me, don't feel like you need to rush it just to get it paved, like you said, if we can, you know, if the plans are still open and it makes sense engineering wise, then obviously, but if, you know, if you feel like we're rushing it, don't. Yeah. Make the correct engineering decision.
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
Reed and Aaron just addressed the concern. I'd actually asked Brent about this a few days ago, why, why the spread footing wasn't the first choice. So I don't need to ask you again.
Sorry, as you guys were talking, I had a couple more questions for the easements that we have, and maybe this is a Dave question, but do they have an expiration date? Are we working up against those?
The temporary ones do. I don't have it in front of me, but we were pretty conservative with that. I think we went out like a full year.
I think it was December twenty five.
Yeah, December twenty five, I want to say. It's well through next year.
Not a concern. Okay, great. And then just like saying this out loud, I don't expect you to have an answer, but like maybe jot down a note, like looking fourteen steps ahead, I'm kind of questioning like how will this impact? You know what I'm going to say? The levy project. So when do we need footings for that? Are we going to come up against these same issues? Do we have enough test holes, you know, soil borings done in that project yet? So again, not a conversation for tonight, but something that I don't want to be as surprised by. Hopefully in two years when we go through this project.
I mean, thankfully, this, I'm considering this a test run for the big project. This is not a small project by any means, but it was, it was an eye opener. And there's, there's other methods to, for piling that it, it's just going to take more time to develop and it's not something that you really want to do on the fly. So we have other options and we'll be prepared for it. So it's just right now, it's just, it's way too expensive to even go down those paths and if spreads work, all the better. So.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for all your comments.
We, we, they do expire at the end of 2025. I think we gave ourselves a full extra construction season to make any adjustments if there were issues. So we have plenty.
That is very smart.
I don't know if I can take the credit. I will.
I would. I would if I were you. If you don't take credit, one of us will. So you should take credit for it. Thank you. All right, moving on. We have no public hearings this evening, but can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by council member Ma, second by council member Pershman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, moving on to business items. The 2025 preliminary levy. Ms. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we're here to consider the adoption of a resolution to certify the 2025 preliminary tax levy in the amount of $4,900,625. So we're not adopting the budget tonight. As you know, we're setting the maximum amount that the levy can be. We need to do this before September thirtieth and we need to do this to the Carver County. So that's what we'll be doing. I'm going to review the levy presentation and budget presentation that you all have seen. There'll be one difference that you'll see and I'll just review it here quickly for you and then allow you to ask any questions. So one thing that we changed for tonight is we pulled out the capital equipment transfers for fire, general, public, general equipment and then the park equipment, which equals $155,000. And we are treating that as a separate levy. We did this for a couple of different reasons. One, transparency. Two, it's, it's going to help us in the long run when we're looking at bonding in the future. You know, there's a calculation that they do for our minimum fund balance for the general fund. And this was being calculated in our expenses. And we were using it for equipment. And so we don't, we don't want, you know, the bond council and, and, you know, the rating agencies to be looking at us, down on us like, you know, our percentage for fund balance. And so taking this out is actually going to help us in the future. Because we really want to be hitting our own policies and right now we're not doing that. So we're just pulling this out, we're being more transparent and it's very similar to that of the street maintenance levy. So this is just a little bit different. It just lowers that general fund levy. That's where we pulled it out of. So with that, I will just move forward. Did anybody?
This would be a silly question. I'm sorry to interrupt, but when I get my tax bill, it's going to just look like one line. There won't be an additional line item.
That's correct. Yeah. Yep. Good question though. All right. So at a glance for the 25 general fund budget, as I said before, this is the ceiling. This is the absolute highest that it can be. Right now, we're sitting at an 11.8% increase over the 24 final levy. The tax rate is going to increase a small percentage if we choose this tonight from 39.85 to 42.3. This does reach our strategic plan initiative of staying within that three percent either way, up or down. We always like to look at the average valued home, which is $433,500 this year, and that is set by the assessor at Carver County. And so the impact to the average valued home with that tax rate of 42.03 would be an annual increase of $82.49. So the 2025 general fund budget represents a 4.8% tax increase. One of the big things in the general fund budget this year, and you guys have all heard about it a lot, is the Employee Pay for Performance Plan. And that was really driven off of our classification and compensation study that started last year and went through this entire year. And it has an effect on the general fund budget of about $150,000. Again, we're increasing the street maintenance levy by 100,000. We have new debt service starting for 2024 and that's going to fund a big project at the Public Services Building and we're getting some new equipment, about a million dollars worth or a hun- we're getting, yeah, about a million dollars worth. Sounds like a lot when you say that out loud. And then we're getting one full, new full-time employee starting halfway through the year in 2025. And then, as I said, we are separating out that capital equipment and we're doing that to try and build that ten-year plan for future capital. So it's listed here as 75,000 for Public Works. So it's listed here as seventy-five thousand for public works, thirty thousand for fire, and fifty thousand for parks. And that total equipment levy will be a hundred and fifty-five thousand. So here we are tonight, considering the adoption of the preliminary levy, the highest that we can make it. Um, October seventh, I will be coming um, forward with some enterprise fund budgets. And then we'll be looking at the long-term financial plan at the end of October. I always like to throw this slide up there, um, because council has been really passionate about the fact that we do not charge our residents franchise fees. And we are one of very few cities that do that. So I think it's something to be proud of. Um, and it's just a kind of a, I don't want to say a hidden revenue on, um, you know, some of the city's income statement or, you know, revenues, but it really kind of is. And so, you know, I think it is something that we need to just remind residents about. Here's just a quick snapshot of what we did for this draft that you'll be seeing tonight. We did reduce um, a little bit of the expense by taking out that seventeen thousand dollars out of our sheriff contract because um, we just eliminated that shared lieutenant position. Again, here's just a presentation of what it'll look like moving forward with calling out that capital equipment similar to the street maintenance fund. Just provides greater transparency and the ability to transfer and use the fund. You can transfer the funds back to the general fund if council decides to do that in the future. Um, and then it reduces an artificial inflator to generate additional fund balance, um, as I said, to adhere to our fund balance policy. So the draft general fund revenues is just under four million and property taxes is, you guys have seen the slide, um, property taxes makes up the largest portion. Um, and then here's the expenses. You'll see that it doesn't show any capital um, for twenty twenty-five. And that's because we're now using that as a levy. Um, just calling out some of the expenditures at a glance for the residents who uh, maybe don't know what we use some of our levy money for. Uh, Carver County Sheriff Contract, the Chaska Parks and Recs Agreement, street lighting. Um, those are some things that people don't think about that we're, that we're using that is maybe a benefit when it's already getting dark out right now and you want to still go for a walk. Um, Southwest Prime Bus Service, forty-five thousand citywide cleanup. Um, I know people really do appreciate that service. And then um, council member salaries, additional public services seasonal position, and then there's some steamboat days sheriff coverage. So still to come, we just have a couple um, items that are, we're always kind of waiting for around this time of the year. Um, and it's those insurances, the health insurance, the dental insurance. And then along with that comes the HSA contributions. Those will only increase if the IRS um, increases the minimum deductible for single-family high deductible health plans, which we do. That is what we offer our employees. Um, we should have those exact costs by the end of October. So this is our summary budget, just at a snapshot. Uh, the, the revenues are on top, the expenses are on the bottom. I tried to kind of lump it by department. So you have public safety, public works, um, parks and rec, contracted services. Um, as you can see, I don't have any capital outlay for this year because it's lumped into the, the levy. Um, and then you can see the revenues are chunked into different areas, investment income, and then charges for services, et cetera. So market value data for twenty twenty-four, this is provided by the Carver County Assessor. So you can see that the percentage of new construction um, for residential increased by four point three six. But the percent market change for the existing homes was only point five percent of an increase. So overall, um, it was a four point eight-six percent increase. Um, and a total, when you consider the commercial industrial apartment and the egg, um, read a four point nine-eight percent increase from last year. So we're looking at the history. I just went back to twenty twenty-two. Um, and you can see that the total levy increase ranges anywhere from eleven point nine-one to thirteen point seven-five. I did analyze the data for the last seven years and I can provide that if you'd like. But I, I came up with a couple data points and fun facts here. Our average levy increase over the past seven years has been ten point eight-five. The average value home has increased in value by a hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars over the last seven years. The tax rate has decreased by eight point four eight percent. I just found these really interesting, so I thought I'd just quick throw them on there for you. Um, the population has grown by over eleven hundred residents. Um, the levy has increased by over two million. And the impact to the average valued home has gone from one thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars to one thousand seven hundred and six dollars in seven years.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it's kind of fun. Yeah. Um, so debt service, again, I mentioned the twenty twenty-four new debt. I have it broken out here by all of the debt that we're currently holding. Um, eight point five percent increase from last year. But the previous year was an eight point five percent decrease from the year before. So. Street maintenance levy increased by a hundred thousand. Here's just another visual of that general fund levy history. You can see the pink, that's our new um, equipment levy. So when you're looking at the proposed twenty twenty-five tax impact, for this preliminary levy numbers that we have, I put the calculation, um, so now we have an exclusion. I've talked about this in a couple different presentations. We now have an exclusion. Last, last year it stopped at, I believe, four hundred and thirteen thousand. It goes all the way up to five hundred and thirteen thousand this year. So now that average valued home does get an exclusion, which helps adjust the taxable value. It decreases it. And then you take the residential tax capacity at one percent. And then you take the City of Carver's tax capacity rate off of that amount, and that's how you get the city tax rate. Um, so this year, you're looking at a four point eight-three percent increase from twenty twenty-four's tax for this average valued home. Here's just a couple more um, examples. So in the top example, I took an actual home, um, that was in twenty twenty-four valued at two hundred and thirty thousand five hundred. This year, their, their um, value actually decreased. And then it shows the exclusions and those are different because of how they were calculated. And so this home actually had a ten dollar and sixty-two cent decrease. The home on the bottom, another actual home, in that three hundred thousand dollar range, they're going, going to experience a ninety-dollar increase with the proposed tax rate. So tonight, council needs to consider and adopt the resolution before you. Remember that you're not adopting the budget, you're not adopting the levy. Um, you're, you're basically just saying this is the highest that we're going to consider it. Um, and then moving forward, October seventh, we're going to do the enterprise fund budget presentation. And then we're going to look ahead for the long-term plan session. And then I'm happy to take any questions that you have or any comments. Questions?
So, you know, I don't have any questions, and that isn't because uh, you know, you haven't presented something that's a surprise. Uh, we've been talking about this in meeting over meeting. Uh, you know, actually, I was surprised to see that it dropped a little bit. I know that's because we're losing the additional support from the sheriff's office. I was, I saw a value in that, so I'm a little disappointed that uh, that didn't go forward. But in the end, it, it's a little lower cost than we talked about in our last meeting. Um, it's just comments. Uh, you know, we've talked since I've been on council about fully funding things. So that when we buy a new loader, we're not going out and getting a loan and paying interest on a loader. So this accomplishes that. That's, uh, this keeps us on track. We're fully funding uh, uh, capital purchases like that. We've talked about the need to retain uh, our employees and attract new ones. And it's, it's a difficult thing to do in a smaller community when we don't have a lot of room to move around. Uh, the, the um, performance pay program, the milestone program incentivizes uh, people to get better at what they do, to, to take additional trainings uh, and move, uh, earn their way to a little bit more money in a job title that they might not be able to move out of just because there isn't an opportunity. So keeping, keeping the employees we have and attracting new ones. I, I think that program does that. Um, you know, it's really about the value that our residents are getting for the average is eighty-two dollars. And you know, that's plus or minus, but uh, the goal has been to keep that rate at three percent or below. And we're below. So it's, it's, it's more money, uh, but we expect that. Uh, it's managed well, it's within our scope. So I'm really actually pretty happy with the work that you've done and that the city employees have done to, to bring us to this point. Sorry, that was a, uh, didn't mean to ramble there.
No, that was great, but more than what I expected for somebody who started off with, I don't have much to say. Uh, Reed?
Um, yeah, I think, I, I like the idea of splitting out the um, capital as its own, the capital level, its own light on, right? Because it, it's not really expenses that the city is incurring on, you know, a yearly basis. It's like Eric said, saving up so that we don't have to go get out a loan for the new, the new loader or the new fire equipment or, you know, replacing the roof and that kind of stuff. So I think that was a, a good change. Um, and then uh, again, to comment on Eric with the uh, increase for retaining the current employees, right? That's kind of a catch-up because uh, if you haven't been watching meetings, that the city has been kind of slowly falling behind on the compensation for our city employees. And it was getting non-competitive and we were having a hard time retaining people. And this is, this is just kind of a one-year item, kind of catch-up to get us back. And then the new plan going forward will help us maintain uh, uh, competitive pay without a large levy increase going forward. So I think that, that's definitely good. And then good work on everyone else on their individual part. So that's all I had.
Um, I think most things have been said. So um, again, we have seen this a few times already. So I, I won't have much to say. I won't say I don't have anything to say. You know, I think, like I said, I, I agree with all the things that have been said. Uh, there isn't a need to dig in too far here because again, we've went over this a number of times. I, Eric and I didn't um, come from the same viewpoint on that, the contracted police expense of the shared lieutenant. Um, I was happy to entertain it. And I did have, um, after going through our couple of drafts, um, a goal that I would, I was really looking to see if we could get under that five percent mark. And I wasn't necessarily on board with lieutenant um, position to start with. So now that we're at four point eight-three percent, for me, that has accomplished that goal. Um, and I don't feel um, personally that we are losing um, anything that is going to be detrimental to the city. Uh, and I haven't uh, had a lot of feedback from the community that, that, that they felt we were lacking on the, from the community standpoint. So I'm happy where this is at and um, knowing also that this is our ceiling and we can come down if we uh, can make that happen, or we may go forward and this is, this is what it is. But um, I'm, I'm on board with this as our ceiling for the, the preliminary levy. Thanks.
I would say, um, I agree with the general consensus that we are happy with this, especially as a preliminary, um, preliminary levy. I think it's at this point every year where I give the disclaimer of if anybody's watching this and it looks like we've zoned out a little bit or our eyes glazed over it. This is at least the third time we've seen this exact presentation. And we've been talking about this probably since May. So um, it's not that we don't think that this is super important. It's that if Lynn needed to tag out, any one of us could give this presentation. But you do it so much better. So right, you do it so much better. Um, I appreciate the mention of the franchise fees. It was only a few years ago that I pointed out that what a neighboring community, I guess, raises, takes in in franchise fees back then surpassed our entire general fund budget. So I think that that's important. So if we're comparing the tax rates to our neighboring communities, especially the ones that on that slide collect franchise fees, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. And that gets really into the weeds of local government finance. But it's an important part of our story as a community that doesn't collect franchise fees. Um, I also um, am duplicating and triplicating uh, what has been said, but I think it's important. We are investing in our most important resource, our people, our staff at the City of Carver. And I think that that's really important. And I think I'm just really proud of this preliminary levy for having that in there. I think it's also worth uh, inter- uh, also worth mentioning in the interest of transparency that we are giving ourselves a raise as well. So that was something that was decided um, kind of by a different council before Reed joined us. Um, but in the twenty twenty-five budget, we will all be getting raises um, that are effectively kind of catching up with uh, what, the, a level of increases that staff has received over the last seven years, probably eight years that was the last time we got. It would be an even number of years, but it has been a, a minute since uh, council got a raise. Um, I also think it's really important that we are fully funding the capital equipment levy and the street maintenance levy. When we started that street maintenance levy, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars. That was a lot and that was a hard decision. And it's just like, you know, to you, use an analogy, you know, like when you've got that first job out of college and you're supposed to be saving for your retirement, but you're making twenty thousand dollars a year. So um, it's always hard. Um, we're kind of at the beginning end of the capital equipment levy, but I'm, I'm proud of this council for making those investments. Um, let's see, I don't think I have anything else to say. So with that, I will make a motion to adopt resolution one thirty-nine dash twenty-four, certifying the twenty twenty-five preliminary tax levy in the amount of four million nine hundred six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I'll second.
Uh, we've got a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Pershman. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Thank you. Uh, eight point two, the Creekside Park Bid Award. Mr. Schmidt?
All right. Good evening again. Um, so this is the Creekside Park Project, which is in the southeast quadrant of Jonathan Carver Parkway and Main Street West. This includes a build-out of four pickleball courts, a small and large dog park, trail improvements, uh, picnic shelter, uh, access road and parking lot, trees and other necessary infrastructure for the build-out of this park. So um, we received bids on September tenth, twenty twenty-four, and we got nine bids. So really good bidding environment this year. Um, I attached the bid tabulation uh, as part of the council packet. So you can see it was, it was really competitive bidding. Um, the low bid was received from S M Henches and Sons of Jordan, Minnesota, in the amount of nine hundred nineteen thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty cents. That bid that was received from Henches and Sons was about nine percent over engineers' estimated cost of the improvements. Um, this project is to be funded using two funding sources. Number one is the, the DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant. That was in the amount of three hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, with the balance being funded out of the Park Dedication Fund. Uh, page two of the memo, I included a table that summarizes our last estimate they, that we sho- uh, had shown the council on August nineteenth with a total estimated project cost of one point one million dollars. Given the bid that was received, the low bid, um, that's reallocated here with a, with an estimated total project cost of one million one hundred seventy thousand dollars, or a change of uh, seventy thousand dollars additional funding, which would be required to construct this project. Should the council prefer not to exceed the prior budget expectations, one thing that could be considered is eliminating the paved um, asphalt surfaces from the parking lot in the asphalt road, or the access road, excuse me. And that would reduce the contract by approximately the seventy thousand dollars that would align with the original budget when you approve the plans and specs. So that's one, one consideration the council would have. Um, since this is a grant-funded project, there are certain elements that would be very difficult to eliminate um, because it was directly part of the grant application and award. So for example, So for example, eliminating the picnic shelter, uh, would be a difficult thing to do because that was a direct thing that was included, um, in the, in the grant award. So, um, staff's recommendation is to proceed, um, as planned with paving the asphalt surface. Doing it later just would be more difficult because you'd be coming back. You'd have to, um, eliminate some of that gravel that abuts like the, the trails and the, kind of the other concrete surfaces that are around the park. So there'd be some lack of efficiency later, um, to come back and do it. But I understand that also seventy thousand dollars is not a small amount of money. So, but that is staff's recommendation is to proceed as planned. Any questions?
All right. Um, maybe I'll start off with this one. I know it came in over budget, but I think something like paving the parking lot isn't something that we should be omitting from this. If we had a house or a commercial application come into the city and say, hey, we came in a little over budget. We're not going to pave our parking lot, that would not be okay with the city. So I don't want that to be a double standard. I also worry about if we don't do it now, then when will we do it? And I also think with the entry being right off of Jonathan Carver Parkway, I don't think that a gravel entryway is something that we would want there just for folks getting, trying to get out of there. So, um, other than that, we do have the money in Park Dead. Those are my thoughts.
Thanks. Reed? Just talked about, uh, the cost to the average homeowner, uh, that we, for our tens of listeners, that the money for that is going to come out of the Park Dedication. That means there's no increase in taxes. This is money that has to be spent, uh, on a new facility, a new park like this. So, uh, it's, uh, that's, that's all that pot of money could be spent on. And I agree with the mayor's assessment. We wouldn't want to, this is going to be a great asset. We have a lot of demand for, uh, uh, pickleball courts, uh, and a dog park. I would hate to get this far into it and then have an unfinished product of the, uh, side-offs to support the seventy thousand dollars.
I have a question then about if it's coming from Park Dedication, which as Eric stated for all, everyone who's watching, is not from our tax that we bring in. This is from what developers bring in when they, um, build new homes here and it has to go into a very specific fund that gets spent on very specific things. So, um, with that said, how does that set us back for, in the Park Dedication Fund, for the future projects and our plans for them, if at all?
Councilmember Mock, council, I would say very marginally, the next project that you're doing out of Park Dedication is a downtown park. And so that's a several million dollar project. I'm guessing at this point, we don't have like a hard number for that offhand that I can think of. So the seventy thousand dollars would be marginal. There's nothing getting pushed back by a year or several years as a result.
Okay. Um, I agree with previous two. We'll just see what Reed says, but for me, I, again, I think not had, setting us up with an unfinished project from the get-go. So I'm happy to, to move that seventy dollars from Park Dead and use it towards that.
Reed?
Yeah, I, uh, I, you know, it's a construction project, right? It was an estimate. Um, all the bids seem, you know, relatively clustered around, you know, nine hundred and nineteen thousand. And then the highest in that is like nine hundred and thirty thousand. There's four of them. So it seems like that's what the actual cost is, you know? Um, and then again, spending the Park Dedication, that's what it's for is for new parks. Um, I guess my only question is, um, with, with the bidder specifically of Henches, um, you know, they, they've been, seems like they've been very good with the, um, uh, bridge, but on the, on the cost there, I was initially taken back. So I'm, I mean, I, I don't know how I can say this, but it, do we trust that, that this is a good bid, right? Do, if we have change orders, are we, you know, I guess maybe Erin. The, the change order was seemingly very high. Was that because the engineering, um, we had requested was legitimately expensive? Or do you feel like there was maybe, you know, cause that bid came in again low? And then as, as we come in, that was actually significantly lower, I think, the other ones. And then that high change order, does, am I just paranoid or, or, or something on there? Have they been a good partner to work with?
Reed, I've also had questions in the past about Henches with, um, the number of change orders. As I've seen products happen over a long tenure with whether staffer or as council. For, for me, I think it's tightened up a little bit for some of the change order issues. And I know that there's always a one-off and down here, our soils are really unpredictable. So, um, I've, I'll let Erin finish that, but I've, I've had that sentiment before. So I don't want you to think that you're, you know, way out in left field and no one has ever been like, well, wait a minute, we're getting all these change orders because I remember our, our job down here that, um, they were doing where I was like, oh, seems like there's more of these coming in than I would have expected. But then engineering and building, there's always the unexpected, so.
You know, as, you know, you know, I mentioned myself, so I know things cost. So I'm just, you know, I guess trying to phrase this as not prejudicial, um, but, um, did, did that two hundred fifty thousand dollar change order on the project we just had with this contractor seem like it fit the, uh, you know, scope of work, I guess? You know, kind of the, the number of pilings or was it, you know? It seemed like there was some making up of their low bid or something.
Well.
Trying to.
As relates to that one specifically, we, we never really had to go down that path and really dig in too far just because once we did the test piling, it kind of ruled it out. So I, I would have reviewed it, um, in more detail. But as it relates to the Creekside Park Project, um, I think that based on this bid tabulation, it's clear that they've submitted a responsible, uh, bid and that if the council is to award a contract, it's to be to the lowest responsible bidder. So, um, I don't, I don't see an issue awarding to S M Henches and Sons. Um, I've completed probably over a dozen construction projects with them and some of them have been park projects in the past. So I, I, I would see a reason why we, we, we wouldn't award to S M Henches and Sons for this project based on this bid.
I think that makes me feel better. I was, you know, just, yeah.
Just to add on to the, Erin's comments, so Henches did the fourth street bridge.
Oh, okay.
Um, and I believe they did the twenty-nineteen, uh, improvement project, didn't they? I know they've done some reconstruction projects and we have a, they were really good on both of those. I would also offer that, knock on wood, uh, there isn't a tremendous or really any significant underground work at Creekside Park. And so the, the frame of having change orders due to soils or you're not constructing any buildings. This is mostly earthwork.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
And just one thing to note too, that I didn't mention before is the, the budget that I have assumed here, it did have the forty thousand dollars in construction contingency. So just so the council's aware that, that may or not, may not be realized, but, but that is in this budget as presented. So, so might give you a little bit more comfort of, we have some room to deal with issues if they do come up, so.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I think, yeah, it makes me feel better that, kind of, you know, my first, first rodeo at this having, oh, what, Bill? So, sorry, anyway, um, thank, thank you, Erin. That, that's all I had.
All right, I'll make a motion to award a contract to S M Henches and Sons, Inc. in the amount of nine hundred nineteen, uh, hundred, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cents for the Creekside Park Project.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm thinking of that one to Christie.
I didn't like them.
Second by, uh, council member Mock. Although, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, communications. Christie, you want to go first?
Sure. Um, so I think we all know that Steamboat Days happened. Um, I want to give shouts out to obviously our city staff who was fantastic, um, answering questions, physically, you know, transporting things to make it happen. Um, you know, a couple of, you know, later evening Saturday questions were answered not only by Brent, but then he was reaching out to staff. And it just, I think, I haven't heard any terrible things from anyone, so I think we did a good job. And we have a lot of volunteers who help out over the weekend. So, um, great, thank you to everyone. And we really hope everyone had a great time because that's why we put all those hours and time and everything and love into it. Um, outside of that, I wasn't able to, uh, be in the last H P C meeting last week. Uh, Lori Sayre did step in for me. Um, she's not here this evening, so Brent, I don't know if you have an update for us on that.
Yeah, the, uh, H P C is, uh, in the process of reviewing properties for its annual, uh, Heritage Preservation Award. So, uh, they're doing that in the months or this next month. So their next meeting is October eighth, uh, which unfortunately is the same night as the Fire Department Open House. But, uh, hopefully a short, a little bit of a shorter meeting. Uh, we are, uh, working with the Carver County Historical Society though to do a, a presentation, uh, to the H P C on, uh, the services they provide. And they are also working on a genealogy presentation, uh, which is a specific service that they provide, uh, to county residents. So that's planned for the October eighth meeting.
Okay, thank you. Reed?
So I had a great time at Steamboat Days. We were down there two days, so thank you for, uh, your hard work and thank you to all the volunteers and lions for that. Um, and then I also had a, uh, county park and rec meeting last week. Um, we had it at the Baylor Park and they had just finished their capital improvement of repairing the boardwalk, which is a floating dock that goes through the park over a lake. And we toured that, that was excellent. Um, and then the other good news is the playground, the other big capital construction project, uh, at Lakeman Washita Park is tentative to open on October twenty-second. Um, and then on the little bad news is with the legislature not having a bonding that the majority of the, uh, capital improvements or plans for the county parks for this year did not make it through the budget due to lack of money from, uh, state. Um, and then we have a, uh, planning commission meeting next Thursday, so I'll give update on the next meeting. That's all I have.
Eric?
Uh, so I was on vacation for the last couple of weeks. I don't have much to, to say, much to say. Christie does a good job in thanking all of the, the people that come together to put Steamboat Days, have a successful Steamboat Days, but, uh, I don't think that we give enough credit to Christie. The Steamboat Days, uh, for Carver, I, it wouldn't be what it is without her unswerving dedication to the city and the time that she puts into that and all of the organization. Uh, so I really want to make sure that, uh, Christie receives.
Oh, Eric, I'm gonna get me. Eric, I appreciate that. Thanks, you guys.
Yeah.
That's it?
Um, a few things from me. September fifth, the day after our last meeting was the, um, opening of Hometown Bank in Mocha Monkey. Trying to think back, I'm not sure how many other communities have had two business openings in the same day, which is really exciting. Um, Hometown and Mocha Monkey partnered to do a promotion where they gave away a year's worth of free coffee to the first a hundred people who were in line. Um, and I had an awkward moment. So my neighbor and I got there a little, about four forty, they were out of numbers by five.
Oh, wow, okay.
There might have been a city staff member who was in this room who came around, around a little after five and they were out of numbers.
Lynn, is that you?
Station as we were sitting there with our numbers. Uh, but really well organized, really well thought out and two really fantastic businesses. Um, I have talked about Hometown Bank previously, but they were at our Business Alliance meetings before we had finalized from the city's perspective, plans for their building. And they, the real deal, they genuinely want to get involved. Mocha Monkey's story is equally as cool where, um, John Schmidt likes to, his hobby is pottery and the glasses and the plates and the mugs that are used in there, um, are all his creations. So just really, really, really cool. Um, let's see, September sixth, we had a Carver County Mayor's meeting that I've explained to you guys in the past as one part ideation and asking questions. Have you heard this? What are you guys doing about that? And one part support group. Steamboat Days, I had Mayor's Office Hours during Steamboat Days. Um, also took part like the rest of us in all the events that were down there. And it was really terrific this year. You guys do something different. Um, every year, got to meet Erin Schmitz, uh, beautiful family during the parade on Sunday, which was really fun because we've heard stories about all of them. Let's see, September ninth, last Monday, was the Regional Council of Mayors meeting. And, uh, the speakers were Steve Simon from Minnesota Secretary of State. The takeaways, uh, and I couldn't find my notes today when I was getting ready for this meeting, but his two takeaways, he said he wants two things for this election. He said he wants it to be high turnout, which he was like done. Minnesota traditionally is really high turnout, that shouldn't be a problem. And he said, and then why, he wants it to be low drama, which he didn't sound quite as confident about. But he also had a really good saying of, you know, the time for, you know, contesting it or the place for contesting all election-related things is in a court, um, which was kind of poignant. Um, we also heard from Steve Groves, who is the former deed commissioner, but is now the Minnesota Star Tribune publisher. And I hesitated when I said that because his presentation was on the rebranding that the Strip, the former Star Tribune, has done and talked about them leaning into that name, the Strip, and the branding work that they've done, even from like the look of it to, um, how they're presenting themselves, what they're focusing on. I asked him a question. I mentioned we're a community that lost our local newspaper. I'm specifically interested in how they're going to be handling elections this year. Cause we all, well, Reed, with the exception of Reed, we all know that the Chaska Herald always did a write-up on every candidate and you got to answer, there are half a dozen or so questions. And that was a really great way for voters to learn about the candidates who was out there and what they were about. And that went away in late April. Um, so they're still trying to figure it out. It doesn't sound like they're going to bring back their voter's guide. I don't know if you remember, but I think when we first ran for council, we had to do a questionnaire for them too.
For the?
For the Star Tribune, yeah. Way, way, way back when. For a number of years. So, um, more to come on that, but really cool to see the rebranding and to hear the story behind that. Um, let's see, last Tuesday on September tenth, um, the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District hosted a barge tour of the Missis, uh, of the Minnesota River. And we started in Savage and ended up in St. Paul. So really cool to hear, um, more about their work. They had about a half a dozen speakers and they were talking about things as we were floating past. Uh, but also to see the river from that viewpoint, which you don't get the opportunity to unless you're in a kayak or a boat. And then, uh, yesterday I did a hike to the Cheese Cave. Um, there are always folks asking about it. It's kind of a little bit of a local lore. Um, so I made it a Facebook event and thought that I maybe have a handful of people. Thirty-five people showed up and so had a fantastic turnout. Um, I have mixed feelings on this, but it worked to our advantage yesterday. But the, the lock on the Cheese Cave was broken into. Um, so we were able to go into the Cheese Cave and kind of see it from that perspective. So, um, really fun, really hot day. I always, I planned it for yesterday because I feel like the weather always takes a nosedive after Steamboat Days. Except for when I plan stuff that's physical. Um, but it was a, it was a good event, so.
Well, it should have been cooler in the cave, right?
It was a little bit, but it was still like steamy and humid, so. Um, that is all that I have. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion by council member Walsh.
I'll second.
And a second by council member Pershman. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Good evening.